Go as well as our broadcast to our Facebook page. Just one second. Okay, one, one more second, please just hang tight while I get the Facebook feed going. So just give me one minute. Sorry about that Samantha has the power to make it go live to Facebook, so just give her one second. Okay, it looks like we should be good to go. So thank you all for being here. One. Okay, so we have some of our members of the public. Thank you so much for being here today for the August change day public hearing. I am Megan Waters, I'm the Community Engagement Manager here at UTA. And I have a few colleagues here today who are going to be sharing the details of the proposed changes with you. So I'm going to pass the time over after I give you a brief sort of overview of our agenda. So they'll be sharing the information in detail about our proposed changes. After they go through their information, there will be an opportunity to ask questions. And then we will at the end provide an opportunity for the members of the public to provide comment. So without further ado, I'm going to pass the time over to Jaren.
Thank you, Megan. Again, my name is Jaren Robertson, ETA's Director of Innovative Mobility Solutions. And my role as an agency has been to oversee this UT on demand via microtransit pilots. And our partnership with VIA and so I'm going to take this time to give you an overview of our microtransit pilot and really what microtransit is. And then you'll get the opportunity here how that fits in our proposal with the August change day as you hear from both Eric and Ryan as part of this call. So with that quickly, you know, last or not last in November 2019, UTA took the initiative to launch what we call microtransit pilot in the south end of Salt Lake County. With that, we were able to provide what we see is emerging technologies and new ways of providing transportation to the community where we see that it's traditionally difficult to use with with our traditional fixed route type services or fluctuate type services. And by using microtransit, it really allows us to provide a coverage based solution that really opens up opens up transit to a large, large areas we've done within the South end of the valley. And so with that, this service, unlike traditional bus where operates on a fixed route type line or route, we geofence an area and I'll show a map of that in just a moment. But in that geofenced area, what you'll see is that you're able to use the service anywhere within the area during the operating hours and days that we make the service available. So essentially what you see is we have a virtual bus stop anywhere within the service area. We don't have any traditional type bus bus stops that you would see with with bus routes. It's just essentially you use a mobile app and then you can make a request for a pickup or a drop off within the service area. And then the app will guide you to how you walk to meet the vehicle and then to complete your final destination. And I'll get into that a little bit more to talk about the service. Again, as noted, you really have the ability to travel anywhere within the service area. And with that, we really look at how we help make connections to our rail system that's within the service area. And within this service itself, we have connections to seven UT rail systems. And so we have two connections in our front runner system at the Draper front runner station in the South Jordan front runner station. And then five track stations, and those are the Daybreak, South Jordan, South Jordan Parkway, Crescent View, Kimball's Lane, and Draper Town Center stations. Our service hours for this for the for the microtransit pilot is 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM Monday through Friday. And I want to note that we do provide a wheelchair accessible service. And so I'll talk about really logistics and how you book and request a trip and how that works on the next slide. But that's a quick overview of what the service is. So in general, we do use a mobile phone app for booking a trip on this. And essentially, once you downloaded this free app, which is available on both iOS and Android phones, you essentially create an account. With that, you can use a credit card, a debit card, we accept Apple Pay, Samsung Pay. We also accept UT fare cards within the app in any other EFC electronic card within the app, these can all be entered in and used as a valid form of fare payment. The only thing we really don't do is accept cash with the service. And we can talk about how fare pay really helps provide that alternative solution. Once you create your account, again, assuming or as long as you're within the service area, which I'll show on the next slide, you're simply going to put in your your pickup location, your drop off location, and then you're going to see available rides and with times. And then simply what you'll be able to do is select that ride. And then it will give you an estimated time for pickup and tell you where to meet the vehicle. In general, you may need to walk a few hundred feet to meet the vehicle. It's not necessarily a door to door service, but what we call a corner to corner service. So if you're maybe in the middle of a block, you may need to walk to the corner to meet the vehicle. This is the service area, as I've talked about right here. And so as you can see, within the south end of the valley, we were servicing Draper City, Bluff Dell, Riverton, Harriman, and a large portion of South Jordan. As mentioned, you know, we really like to provide these connections to our rail network here. And so you see the front runner line in the middle there, the pink line with the South Jordan and Draper front runner stations on the blue, that's our blue tracks line. And then on the left, you see the red tracks line. Final thing I wanted to know is I kind of talked about is is we talked about wheelchair accessible service. And so should any of our customers need access to wheelchair accessible vehicle? They simply just have to make that request as part of their trip. And so there'll be a little switch that would give you the option to make that request for wheelchair accessible vehicle. Once you made that request, that vehicle will pick you up door to door. And rather than a corner to corner type service, so if you're using a wheelchair or some other mobility device, we don't require that walking distance. So with that, I'm going to be available after this presentation, answer any questions you may have. But I will turn the time over to Ryan Taylor to talk about some other services.
Thank you, Jaren. I think it's important that people understand what a flex route is versus a regular bus route. And so I wanted to start out by explaining how that operates, what it is, and what a passenger can expect when they use it. So how it is similar to a regular bus route is that it does typically run on a on a fixed street and a fixed schedule. Where it differs is that passengers ahead of time can request that that bus deviate off of that and make a special stop up to three quarter miles off of that regular route. For example, if someone has a disability or they're aging and they couldn't make it out to the main street from their house, they could call and make arrangements for that bus and it would it would go off its normal routing down the street and pick that individual up at their curb or up to three quarters of a mile, like I said before. That does have to be scheduled in advance and we only allow two of those per trip just so that we can keep it on schedule as much as possible for the other customers that wouldn't expect it to go off route. And that deviation does cost an additional fare to do that. Now, these routes are typically shorter than some of our regular big bus routes. The stops may be further apart than other fixed route buses. And we typically run a smaller bus. There's a picture of one here on the presentation. These buses are smaller, they're very similar to our pair of transit vehicles. They are also lift equipped, so anybody using a mobility device such as a wheelchair, we can accommodate them and help them get on board and secure them properly. Can we go the next slide? Now, in our proposal that we're bringing to the public this month, we are talking about modifying some of the flex routes in this area. First of this is that we want to convert three of our fixed bus routes and turn them into these flex type routes. The second big piece of this is in this microtransit zone, we want to make that microtransit service permanent. And there are currently four flex routes within that zone. And so what we would do is we would take those resources, those flex route resources, and we would put them in other parts of the valley outside of the microtransit zone. And then the third thing that our proposal does is we want to approve and expand the service coverage. That includes an increase from 60 minutes to 30 minutes on those routes. And and essentially making them more convenient, giving more coverage to more people. So with that primer of our flex routes and some of the modifications, we're going to turn that over to Eric Callison, he's one of our service, he's our service planner manager. And he can talk specifically about what that means. So Eric, time is yours.
All right, let's go ahead to the next slide. This is just a list, there's two slides that have the route changes on them. So this is all of the stuff, this first slide is what's getting replaced. So these first five routes, we have the F-504, F-518, F-534, F-546, and F-547. These are the routes that Ryan mentioned a moment ago that operate within the microtransit pilot area. Route F-534 is currently suspended due to COVID, has been since last year. The other four routes in this area are running on a reduced schedule versus their pre-COVID level of service. We're proposing that those routes would just be replaced by the microtransit service in this area. Route F-514 also runs within the microtransit area. However, pre-COVID, that was the strongest flex route out of any of the ones on this list. And we expect that market to recover once people start going back to work, back to school. We do expect to see ridership increase quite dramatically on that route. So that route will stay in place for now. And then we also have these three fixed routes that Ryan mentioned, Route 11, Route 525, and Route 232. That would be replaced in the case of Route 11 and Route 232, it'd be replaced by Route F-11 and Route F-232. Then F-232 will be a very similar route. And there will be a couple of maps coming up in the presentation. F-232 will be very similar to the current 232. Route F-11 will focus on the portion of Route 11 that is unique. Right now, there's quite a bit of duplication between Route 6 and Route 11 in the avenues in Salt Lake City. And this Route F-11 will focus mainly on that, the upper avenues portion that is unique to Route 11. And Route 6 will continue to run. And then Route 525 is currently a one way loop between 7,800 South and 9,000 South in Midvale and Sandy. We're proposing to split that up into two flex routes that both go in both directions so that you don't have to ride the loop all the way around. In order to get back to where you started, you can catch the bus in either direction. This also helps us provide a little bit more connective tissue, provides connections to additional rail stations. And just kind of connects that section of the valley a little bit easier. Where right now you have kind of a loop that doesn't go, it only goes to one place, only goes to one track station. And so you end up having to backtrack if you're going in any other direction. If we go to the next slide, there's just a couple of other routes that are proposed to change. So we're proposing routing modifications throughout F-556 and F-578. Basically, that's to extend coverage a little bit further south and west than we currently offer it. So Route 556 would be extended to 7,800 South. F-578 would be extended to 5,600 West, and there'd be a transfer point there and just kind of add that little corner of service. I just want to pause for a second to talk about the F-578. That is the route that we've gotten the most comment on so far. Appreciate everyone sending in those comments. The main concern seems to be that Route F-578 currently does a loop through Jordan Landing. And the proposal is we've outlined it, it would just continue straight on 7,800 South. I did look at the ridership numbers. And it looks like we have an average of about 19 people a day using that Jordan Landing loop on the Route F-570. So we're, we're interested in getting feedback, making sure that we understand the trips that everybody's making in this area. Because we don't want to inconvenience more people than we help necessarily. But the information that would be useful to have from anybody that's participating tonight or anybody else that you'd like to share the UTA's contact information with, we're interested in knowing where in Jordan Landing you're going. As much information as you're comfortable sharing, if you don't like sharing the exact location, you can share an intersection or a bus stop location that you use in Jordan Landing. Where you're coming from specifically, are you coming from tracks? Are you coming from another mode of service or another part of the valley? Or are you making your entire trip on Route F-578? And also, when and how often, is this part of your daily commute to work and home? Is this a trip that you make occasionally? Because we do have the flexibility to look at different options with this. That's part of the reason why we have these public hearings, these public input opportunities is to make sure that we're considering all the different sides of the issue, all the different travel patterns that are being done in this area. And so we, we might be able to modify Route F-578, but still make accommodations for people who are traveling in the area. We might be able to make modifications to Route F-570, which will still serve the Jordan Landing area in any case, whether the F-578 does or not. So we just want to get a little bit more information from everyone. Again, as much as you're comfortable sharing about the trips that you make in this area and how this change affects you specifically. It, we understand the need sometimes to say this would be a bad change, you'd get it off your chest. But the more information you can provide us, the more specifically we can respond to your feedback and address your concerns. The final route here is 871, this route is a fixed route that runs between Lehigh Front Runner Station and Draper Town Center Station on the blue line. We are just proposing scaling that back a little bit to match the front runner schedule. Right now, there is not a lot of traffic on this route. We do expect some ridership to return in the future. But at this point, we're just scaling it back a little bit, it'll still run the same hours of service. It'll still run as early and as late, we're just take out some of those trips in the middle of the day when there's not a front runner train to connect to and not seeing very much ridership on those trips at all. So that is the extent of the changes. If we can go to the next slide, there's just a couple of maps. And I'll just describe these really briefly. As I mentioned, Route F-11 in the avenues here towards the top of the map would serve the upper avenues and connect with LDS Hospital in the U of U. That's the part of the 11 that is unique to Route 11. Route, if we go to the left hand side of the map, Route F-556 will extend further south on 5,600 West. Instead of doing the loop between 5,400 South and 6,200 South, it'll go down to 7,800 South. Route F-578 would extend further west to 5,600 West. Route F-232 would basically be the same as Route 232. Excuse me. And then right here on the map, just to the right of the words West Jordan, you can see the two routes that kind of snake north and south through this area that duplicates both halves of the current loop on the 525 and provides additional connections to Bingham Junction Track Stations, Sandy Civic Center Track Station, and South Jordan Front Runner Station that don't currently exist in this area. The route at the very bottom between Riverton and Draper here is the Route F-514 that runs in the pilot area that we're proposing to retain. We just want to extend that a little bit further south to cover some offices and apartments that are just south of the Draper Front Runner Station. You can see the train station from there, but there's not currently a bus stop in that location. So just the aim of these changes is to provide just a little bit more coverage, a little bit more connections, make it a little bit easier to travel through this part of the valley. And you know, try to use these resources, these flex route resources that are available to us in the way that will benefit the most people. Let's go ahead to the next slide. So here's just the detail, a little bit more detailed view of these. And this presentation will be available, as Megan mentioned, on YouTube and Facebook after this. If you have any questions afterwards, these maps are also available on our website. If you look at the, the public hearing page, there's a link on the landing page when you get to our website that will show you that detail. Thank you, Megan. Yeah, Megan just put the link in the chat as well. And let's go to the next slide. And then here's the change to the F-514 as well. That's just extending the coverage a little bit further south. Currently, it just goes on 123rd and into the station. This would provide service to that neighborhood just south and west of the first east, sorry, south and east of the station. And then the extension of F-556 and F-578. Let's go to the next slide. And at this point, I'll seed the mic.
Okay, there was one chat that came in with a comment on the F-578. So thank you for that. I am going to ask our attendees to raise your hand if you would like to ask a question or alternatively, you may unmute or put, put it, put your question in the question and answer. I can unmute you if, if you raise your hand, I don't want to unmute everyone at the same time. Okay. Sam, could you make me the host? All right, we have a couple folks with questions. I'm going to start with Dallin Birch, I'm going to allow you to talk. Dallin, it looks like you are able to unmute yourself now.
Yeah, can they all hear me?
We can.
Okay. So I could speak now. Cool. So I think getting rid of the 504 and the 518 and the 47 is ridiculous because I'm in a wheelchair and I use VIA every day. And they're never on time, they destroyed my wheelchair, video footage of that. And, and I've been stranded several times as well. And with the 504 and the 518, I feel comfortable riding those every day because, because I know they're coming around every hour. I never have to worry about being late to work and stuff like that, you know. So just what I just, just putting that out there.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry to hear about the damage to your mobility device, Dallin. Thank you for sharing your comment. Did you also have a question about any of the changes? But otherwise, your comment will definitely be recorded. All of your comments tonight will be recorded on our public involvement record and be provided back to the team that's making, making the final decision. So it will be under consideration. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and mute you, Dallin. Let me know if you have any additional questions. Did you want to say anything else?
No, I'm good, I'm just real ticked off there thinking about getting rid of VIA over in South Jordan.
Okay, we hear you.
Yeah, that's all.
Thank you for sharing your comments.
You're welcome.
I'm going to go next to Deborah Bailey. Deborah, I'm going to let you unmute yourself, you should be able to speak now. Deborah, are you able to unmute? Maybe we can come back to Deborah. Next, I am showing Jacob, I'm going to allow Jacob to unmute. Jacob, you should be able to speak now.
Yeah, I can speak now.
Great.
I have a couple of questions. So I noticed that among the changes, F-504 specifically actually is actually current run Saturday. And, and I'm kind of concerned for the people who use 504 on, who might use 504 on Saturdays. Because part of the proposal was to only have the microtransit on weekdays. And if you, and if you get rid of F-504 and replace it with only the microtransit that only runs on weekdays, then you'd be kind of stranding the people who use 504 and don't have any other connections. Like they can't, they can't get on any other routes.
Jaren or Eric, do you want to respond to the, to the question about Saturday service?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I kind of concerned about just that pretty much the weekend service in general. I don't really use it on weekends in general. But I think, but I'm sure there's definitely people who, who do use it on, on the weekends, particularly Saturday, probably. And I think it'd be good to at least allow the, at least have the microtransit on Saturdays instead of only on weekdays. Especially, especially because there's some routes that actually currently run Saturday. Like I said, specifically the F-504, that runs on Saturday. And if you get rid of that and replace it with the microtransit that only runs on weekdays, what are people who only you, who can't use any other bus route except the 504 to get anywhere from their home, what are they going to do?
Megan, I can speak for a moment and Eric may want to chime in. For, for purpose of the pilot, we really looked at what those F routes in the service area were doing. And they are running Monday through Friday. As you noted, there is the one route that does run on weekends. And so again, the purpose of this is to help gather comment and feedback so we can make good decisions about how to move forward. I will say at this point in time, it isn't planned to add weekday or weekend service with August. But this is something that as an agency, we will look at. And so again, having your, your comments regarding this, this concern is, is helpful. And I think we've got that noted, so it's something we'll look at as part of the future and see both the viability of and the demand for something like that. And Eric, feel free if there's anything I missed you want to add.
Um, I would just say kind of the same thing. I know we got some comments about the F-578 before the public hearing. If there's anybody that is affected by this F-504 that, that would be affected by it not running on Saturdays, we'd like to know basically as much information as people are comfortable sharing about their trip. You know, where are they coming from, where are they going to? To see if there's a modification we can make or whether we need to consider, you know, a slightly different proposal for August change day.
I, you know, I pretty much only use the buses and whatever on weekdays, but so, so that wouldn't really affect me personally. But, but I know there's some people who use, who use the buses on weekends. And so I think, I think it'd be good to at least consider the fact that maybe, consider the fact that they might be stranded. If essentially the service is discontinued, basically, because that's kind of, because that's kind of what that's doing for Saturday. If you replace the F-504 with the microtransit and only run it on weekdays compared to F-504 running on Saturdays as well.
Thank you, Jacob, for your comments.
I actually have another question, though.
Okay.
So, so again, I, I don't go to Midvale basically, basically at all. And I don't really know what's on the, on the current 525 route. But I noticed that in the proposal, the F, neither the, there was a certain part of, of the current 525 route that would be serviced neither by the new F-525 nor the F-202. Can't remember exactly where it was, but I noticed there was a part that just would not be serviced at all Can't remember exactly where it was, but I noticed there was a part that just would not be serviced at all by either of those routes.
Is that the section on 90th by chance?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't remember exactly what streets it was, but I noticed on the maps, there was a, there was a dotted line over there.
Because there are two sections of the 525 that would be a little bit different. And the section on 90th would be covered by Route F-590 that's still running through there.
Okay, yeah, okay, yeah. Because I was gonna, I was concerned for the Midvale people over there. Because that, because that particular section that I'm looking at right now kind of looks like a, looks like a kind of big section that would be no longer serviced.
And then there's
But you said, but you said that F-590 would service that, would service that part?
Yes, there's a portion of the 525 that's still served by the 590.
Okay.
On this map, because it's not changing, but it, but it's still
Okay, so the F-525 and the F-202, neither of them would service that port, that part. But the current F-590 would.
That's correct. That, that's the one section. The other section is, is on Main Street between 78th and Sandy Parkway. And we're, we're still evaluating, you know, that would just be a question of the, the 202 going down a different street than the 525 does.
Okay.
In stone at this point.
Yeah. Yeah, kind of concerned about the, these kind of large looking, no more service parts in general though. It was like F-556 also has a pretty big looking area where, where it's no longer going to be serviced.
That, that's a good question as well, because that
And same, same, and same with the Jordan, same with the Jordan Landing thing. The Jordan Landing loop. That's kind of, that kind of looks like a pretty major loop that would be no longer serviced by that route.
So there are other routes in, in both of those areas, which is why we kind of know, you know, if people are using the bus in that area. Are they using the 578 specifically? Are they using the 556? You know, would they be able to, you know, if they, if they are coming in the case of Jordan Landing, for example, if they're coming from tracks, would they be able to use the 570 or the 240? Or would they be able to use the 54, the 62 for this loop on the 556? It is a little bit of streamlining, but we're, that's why we're curious to know, you know, what, what effect this has on the travel patterns of people that are using it. So friends, if, if they use these routes, you know, we want to make sure that we're, we're taking their travel into account.
Okay, I, I think that's it for now for me. I might, I might have some questions later, but
Okay. And you should be able to contact us at the, at the link I put in the chat at rideuta.com/augustchanges. We do have a lot of ways to contact us. So if anything comes to mind later, but thank you, Jacob, for your, for your comments.
No problem.
Okay, I'm going to move on to, let's see if Deborah is able to unmute herself. Deborah, are you able to speak? Okay, and then I'm going to go on to Jason Thompson. Jason, you should be able to unmute yourself. Jason or Deborah, are either of you able to unmute? If you're not able to, perhaps try putting your question
Okay, I got you.
Oh, there you go. Hi, Jason.
Yeah, see, I got it, I got it. I just got a quick concern and I'll let this floor go for other people. Thanks for having me on. This is a concern about the 578 and getting rid of the Jordan Landing loop. We live, my wife and I are disabled and we live in the Woodgate Apartments. And basically that would leave us to use the 240 bus. And she has a walker and a lot, most of the stops here are not accessible on the regular bus. And crossing Jordan Landing Boulevard and Jordan Village Road is just horrible. Because I'm totally blind and there are no beeping lights. So that would be cause a real mess for us to go get our meds and groceries and everything like that, like that at Sam's Club.
And Deborah's also in our complex. Tell me that.
I believe Deborah is also in our complex too. So same deal for her too. She's in a wheelchair.
Okay. Thank you very much for sharing those comments. They are, they are on the record. This meeting is being recorded as well as your comments are being recorded. So I really appreciate your time and taking, taking tonight to tell us those.
Yeah, it was a pleasure meeting you and thanks for all you guys are doing for the meeting. Best of luck. I'm going to shut down and mute up right now so the next person can, can have the floor. Thanks again.
Thanks, Jason. Okay, the last, the last hand I still see is Deborah's. Deborah, is there any chance that you're able to unmute or ask your question in the chat? Okay, I see another hand up from Mike Christensen. Mike, I'm going to allow you to talk. And so then you should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thanks, Megan. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Awesome. Are you taking comments on items beyond these aforementioned bus routes?
Sure, yeah, we can take comments now. Most of the folks have shared comments already. So feel free to, to share your comment.
My, my one comment, I mainly ride on tracks. And I am wondering when track service is going to be fully restored. Right now, it's very inconvenient to ride in the evenings and on weekends. And for me to go across Salt Lake City, it creates very long layovers at courthouse. So I'm very curious to find out if there's any plans to restore that service to what it was before the pandemic.
Thanks for your comment question, Mike. Do we have, Nicole is on the line. I know Eric had to duck out for a city council meeting. Is someone able to talk about that? Or shall we bring it back and share a response with the, with, in follow-up after the meeting?
I can speak briefly to that. Mike, thank you for your question. We will be announcing some restoration of August Change Day shortly. But I can just tell you that I think you'll be happy. I don't want to say too much more than that, okay?
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
All right, thanks. I don't, I don't want to spill the beans too, too soon, but things will be changing soon, hopefully. All right, thanks, Megan.
Thanks, Nicole. And Mike, your, your comment's recorded. So if there is additional follow-up, we have your info so we can, we can follow up too.
Thanks.
Thanks, thanks for being here. Okay, we do have some other attendees. I want to be sure everyone has an opportunity to make comments. So please go ahead and raise your hand if you would like to provide a comment at this stage. I see one hand went up. I'm going to let Austin unmute. You should be able to speak now, Austin.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say that the F buses from when I've taken them are a lot more friendly than the people in VIA. And, you know, you'd be like ruining their jobs as far as the F buses goes. You know, when the VIA people, oh, they speak a lot of Spanish and I can't understand what they're saying. And the F buses are really, really friendly people.
Thanks for your comment, Austin. We will record that and be sure to share it with the service planning team.
Appreciate it.
So I still see Deborah's hand up. I'm gonna try one more time. Deborah, are you able to unmute yourself? Okay. Their hand is down now. Um, okay, I'm not seeing any additional hands raised. So I just want to be sure though that everyone on the call has had an opportunity to share. So if you do want to speak, if you do want to share a comment on the proposed changes for August. Please raise your hand or put it in the chat. So we will be sharing this recording along with some follow-up information. If there were unanswered questions on the rideuta.com/augustchanges webpage. Encourage you to head over there and review the information we've shared. Spend some time with those maps if you're interested. But there's a lot of ways for you to get in touch with us. So please feel free if other questions or comments come to mind, to send them our way. I am going to hang on and stay on the meeting. Oh, Jacob, did you? Did you want to hear? Did you want to unmute? Jacob sharing some thoughts in the chat. And we have that comment recorded. I just want to give you, okay, he says sure. So Jacob, go ahead. You, you can, you can share your comment. Go ahead and unmute.
Yeah, so. So I already, so like I said in the, in the chat box, I actually called UTA about this already the other day. We're just figuring it might also, it might also be a good idea to, to get it out there during this as well. Especially since you guys are like, oh, this is going to be on YouTube and Facebook and whatever. And so this is probably going to be reaching a much larger audience. But I'm concerned, but I'm concerned about people who, who don't have a phone, they don't have phone access. And if they live in southern, if they live in southern Salt Lake County and they're not anywhere near. So if they're in southern Salt Lake County and you get rid of the flex routes. And you replace them with only the, with only the microtransit thing. And they don't have a phone. They can't actually use the, the VIA. And so they'd be stranded. And the same thing if your phone is dead and you can't get access to any other phone.
I do remember seeing that comment, Jacob. So we have it on record. Thank you for sharing it again here. We appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Okay, so it doesn't look like we have any additional questions from the group. So I just want to thank everyone for joining and listening this evening. Like I said, if any, anything comes to mind, there are many ways to get in touch with us. Please don't hesitate to do that. I'm going to stay on the line until about seven. So if, if you, anything comes to mind, we can chat. But I'm going to kind of stop sharing and let everyone go. Thanks so much for joining us.